I'd like to call tonight's meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to order. Eileen, opening statement, please.
Planning Board Meeting Thursday, February 7, 2019. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 4, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 4, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 4, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning, excuse me, Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Boyle has been excused. Mr. Dorado?
Here.
Mr. Husser has been excused. Chief Kudrick?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro?
Here.
Mr. Schneider's been excused. Mr. Tannenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Everett's been excused. Councilwoman, excuse me, Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Here.
And Chairman Nash?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like for everyone to please rise as we do the Pledge of Allegiance, and then a moment of silence for our first responders in our troops both overseas and in our country. Chief, if you'll be honest.
(inaudible)
First up, I have the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 6, 2018. Eligible voters are Mr. Nacastro, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Seaman, and myself.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Castro seconded.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, correspondence, I think.
Yes, I have a letter from Jan Wooters. He is the attorney for SL Homes. They are on tonight's agenda, and in light of a continuing discussion with the Planning Board engineer concerning details of the application, he has asked that this matter be carried to the March 7, 2019 Planning Board public hearing. He also granted the Board an extension of time to act on this application through March Do you want to take them one at a time?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Wooters has requested that that be without further public notice. Further public notice, however, may be required depending upon the litigation in this matter. So...
I believe he has renoticed.
Yeah, so actually my recommendation would be that new notice is going to be required.
Okay.
So we don't need to make any specific announcement for that. It's just there'll be a new notice that's published.
Unless there's members here...
Okay. Do we want to...
We do anticipate, however, that it will be March 7, but there'll be a new public notice that is published and goes out to the 200-foot property owners.
Okay. So do you want to make the announcement to the public?
That's the only announcement.
That we're not...
Yeah, so the application of SL Homes, Inc., case number SP-1013, that matter will not be heard tonight. It will be carried. There will be a new public notice. We do, however, anticipate that the hearing will be on March 7.
Thank you. I also have a letter from Robert Munoz. He is the attorney for Northeast Remsco Construction. They are also on tonight's agenda, and he has asked that the Board take jurisdiction of this matter this evening and carry the application until February 21, 2019 with no further notice, and they are good on time.
Okay, so if that's... Is that acceptable, Mr. Chair?
You're comfortable of us taking jurisdiction?
We, I mean, we've already... We've already taken a look at the notice, so, you know, to the extent that we believe the notice is okay, you know, we have jurisdiction. If someone objects to the jurisdiction, you know, and has a meritorious argument, we'll review it. So I think we have jurisdiction, but, you know, we will listen to anyone who believes otherwise.
Okay. And when would that be carried to?
February 21, 2019.
What do we have on the 21st?
We have Rosemary Byrd, which is a minor subdivision that was carried to that date. We have Lanes Pond Velifers, which is a minor subdivision, which was carried to that date. Gil Patrollem was carried to that date, but I've already spoken to their attorney, and they're going to be carried to a different date. And then we have this one. So we would have three applications on that evening.
And two of them are really minor.
Right.
Okay.
And this is a minor site plan.
So let's make the announcement.
Okay, so the application, SP-830-A3 Northeast Remsco Construction, be carried to the Board's February 21, 2019 meeting. There'll be no further notice to property owners, so if you receive the notice in the mail regarding this application, you will not receive another one. If you want to take another look at the file or any documents, you can come during normal business hours to Eileen's office in the Planning and Zoning Department.
Any other correspondence?
Yes, I sent an email to all members regarding board member training. It is not going to be at the Monmouth County Firehouse this year. It will be at Manalup in Town Hall, but I need everybody to get back to me with a yes or a no if they're going. I actually have already registered anyone who I have not heard from, but we have to cancel at least three days prior if you're not going. So if you could let me know one way or the other, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
I also have, and I apologize for the lateness, but these were sent to me today from the clerk. There were two ordinances regarding signs that the council introduced on Tuesday evening, and their next meeting is two days before our next meeting, so they asked if at all possible, could we review them, discuss them, and vote on whether they are consistent with the master plan so that they can formalize their introduction and vote on them that evening.
Do we have copies that we can distribute to the Board?
I only have one of each, but I know Peter has reviewed them.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at the one ordinance here. It's O-195, permitted signs in business and industrial zones. I guess I'd like some clarification, although if our professionals have looked at this, these ordinances at all. There's one that says wall, permitted signs in an industrial and business zone, wall facade in the neighborhood commercial zone, the sign shall not be, shall not exceed 20% of the area of the first or ground story facade. In the other business zones, the sign area shall not exceed 25% of the area of the first or ground story facade. A story shall not exceed 12 feet in height for the purpose of these calculations. What does that mean? Does that mean if we had a facade that's 100 feet long and 12 feet wide, 20% of that could be the size of the sign? And that's...
Correct.
Whereas right now, we have just a certain square footage maximum, and that's it.
Um, this, so that is ordinance number 0-195 in Chapter 256, I think, is the one that you, that you had just quoted. And that actually is part of the existing ordinance in Chapter 188 section, Chapter 188, Section 231, I'm sorry. That's actually, what happened here essentially is the ordinance that you just read from, which is 0-195, took the language from Section 231 of Chapter 188 and actually compiled it and streamlined it. There was a lot, a lot of redundancy, so that's actually already on, on the books.
Oh, okay.
At this point. The only material that was introduced that's new, oh, I guess there's a few items. One is an introduction of some language about LED and electronic signs. Another is a change that permits businesses that have either corner lots or if they're along Route 33 or Route 9 in certain zones, it enables them to have two signs instead of just one. Other than that, there's limitations. No non-conforming users can have signs, can have two signs, rather. In shopping centers, there's limitations. Only if you're an end unit and you're on a corner lot, you can have a second sign. Other than that, unless you have more than 1,000 feet of frontage, you can't have additional signs. So, so things like that. But the rest is, it's actually existing ordinance language that was compiled into one section.
Yeah, and I see here about the LED signs, it looks like it's allowed, being allowed as long as it doesn't flash every, faster than five seconds.
Correct.
Just, just for the Board's knowledge, I think this really stemmed from an email that I, back in August, when Walmart came here. It was the application where they were just kind of removing a sign and replacing it, and I couldn't understand why administratively we couldn't allow business. So that's what initially drove this conversation from the council to now.
Well, I saw no reasons why we can't have LED signs. It's kind of the wave of the future these days.
Yeah, the town already has them, and there was no real, it was ambiguous on the language, so Matt Howard from the zoning office really wanted to just clear everything up, and we thought it would be a good time to put everything in one area, so...
Yeah, it, it actually does, it streamlines the ordinance as well. It has sign types in one category and then sign standards, so from an applicant perspective, it'll, it should streamline the understanding of the ordinance as well.
From a planning standpoint, you don't have any objections to the language that was...
No, it's all, it, the vast majority of it was existing. The new language, I don't have any issue with, and I cross-reference the master plan. There's, there's nothing in it that would be inconsistent with the master plan, so I find it to be generally consistent.
Well, if anybody cares about my opinion, I'd be okay with at least that one. The other one, I'm not sure. I may, may need some time to review.
Well, let's take one at a time.
So the other one was just killing one and then...
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Oh. You're sticking with that, the one at a time. So you, you want to vote on the first one?
Ryan, it's my understanding, the second one is just eliminating...
The redundancy.
The redundancy and consolidate, so it's really two of the same.
The other one refers you back to the first one.
Yeah, I'm skimming through it here. I see most, just about all of it is just scratched out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's correct.
So we're voting on O-195 and, what's this, the other one?
O-196.
Six. And O-196 is basically just repealing everything.
It's, yeah, it's deleting the language that was incorporated in the other section.
Okay.
Yeah.
I agree with Brian. I'm, I'm comfortable in moving on this tonight. Mr. Seaman?
I would agree. Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr....
So you just need a motion that's consistent with the master plan?
Substantially consistent.
Substantially. So moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. Is that the end of our correspondence?
That is the end of my correspondence. Thank you.
All right, so we will move on now to case number, sorry?
Resolutions?
Yep, getting ahead of myself. We have resolutions. Case number SP 1048, LRAC LLC. It's a resolution granting minor site plan approval. Eligible voters are Mr. Nacastro, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Gentlemen, can I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Next one is case number SP 1050, The Fishing Line LLC. It's a resolution grant, excuse me, granting minor site plan approval. Eligible voters, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Nacastro, Mr. Tannenhouse, and myself. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Next one is case number SD 28, I'm sorry, 2981, Arnold Boulevard LLC and TEK Warehouse LLC. It's a resolution granting preliminary major subdivision approval. Eligible voters, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Nacastro, Mr. Tannenhouse, and myself. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
That was Mr. Nacastro.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Okay, now, we'll start our new business, finally. First case we'll hear tonight is the only case that remains on the agenda, which is case number SP 1051, Cornerstone Calvary Chapel. It's a conditional use slash preliminary and major fi, final, sorry, preliminary and final major site plan. It's the application of Cornerstone Calvary Chapel as applicant and community Bible fellowship as owner seeking conditional use and preliminary and final major site plan approval to remove all existing site improvements and construct a split-level church slash ware, slash house of worship building, a two-story rectory slash parren, parsonage building, and an accessory shed with additional improvements such as storm water management basin, lighting, landscaping, and site identification sign on premises known as Block 39, Lot 1, 3071 Lakewood-Alamwood Road and Oak Glen Road.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just before we get started, Chief Kudrick will be recusing himself from this application.
Okay. Okay, just before the applicant begins to present his case, there's a lot of faces in the audience who may have, may not have been in one of these applications before. So I'm going to give you the procedure so you understand what's going on. What we do is the applicant has a certain set of witnesses that he wants to put on, and after each witness, everyone in the aud, audience can get up and ask questions of that. For example, if the engineer gets up and starts to testify and you have a question, when, when he's done, you stand up and say, "I would like to ask a question of the engineer. I don't understand the storm water, or I don't understand certain things that you said." You can ask questions. It's not the time when you can make statements saying, "I don't like the application, I'm for the application." When the applicant is all done with his witnesses, I will then open it up where you can come up and you can do your own statement, you can do your own testimony. Are there any questions as to the procedure? Okay, if not...
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Frederick Neiman, Hanlon Neiman, and Wright, U.S. Highway 9 Freehold Township. I'm representing Cornerstone Calvary Chapel.
Mr. Neiman, there's a large number of people, all right, and we like to record this, all right? I would ask that you step to the podium and use the mic.
Or just pull that mic closer to you, so we have to be able to hear you on the record.
We also have a wireless mic so that when your witnesses get up and if they're going to, to the Boards to testify, we'll ask that they use that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is that better? Can everyone hear now?
Can people in the audience hear?
Yes.
Sure, go ahead.
Point of procedure, Mr. Chairman, as relates to the exhibits, will those be identified at the beginning of the application?
As you're going through them.
Okay. I want to, may I introduce, there's going to be three additional exhibits, Council. There's going to be Exhibit A-12, which is a colored site plan layout. There's going to be A-13, which is a colored site layout of the elevations of the church and parsonage. It's actually a colored depiction of Exhibit A-5. And then the final exhibit will be A-14, which I've given, I think, 14 copies to Mrs. Robano. That's the handout of reduced-size site plan marked, which has been marked as A-3, the traditional blueprint copies. And included within A-14 is also reduced-size elevations of the proposed church and parsonage. I would, Council asks that that perhaps be distributed at this point because it will allow the...
That's fine.
The Board to actually see blueprints.
That's, that's fine. Can you also just mark 12 and 13 where we're at it?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'll let the Board take a quick look at that for maybe a minute while we're marking those exhibits so you'll be familiar with it, and I think you'll find it helpful, illustrative, and assisting in the testimony that you're about to hear. I think I can say this without disrupting your trend of thought because you've already heard the Chairman generally describe the application based on the agenda. I would also indicate that CME's report of November 21, 2018, on page 2, does a very thorough project description that I think suffices in lieu of me presenting it all over again. This is a very traditional site plan application for a church, for a church that exists already in Howell Township and has been in Howell Township for well over a decade, and fortunately through growth, and, and the congregation is now looking to relocate from Highway 9 to this proposed location, which also presently consists of a house with a parsonage. So for tonight's presentation, I'm going to introduce you to the pastor, Pastor Chris McCarrick, who will introduce you to the applicant Calvary, Cornerstone Calvary Chapel. I have Mr. Walter Miller, who is a church representative, a leader of Cornerstone. He's also involved in the building designs. He will serve as the construction manager and is very familiar with many of the details of the project. In terms of our engineer, our professional engineer from inside engineering will be Mr. Steve Musto, and I also have next to him, actually sitting behind him, Mr. Leon Cahill, who is the design professional, who's done a lot of the detail work in the plans, and they're all available, of course, to testify tonight. I'll try not to testify too much, respecting my role as the attorney instead of the, but I am an advocate, so I'll probably cross that line more than once, so if I do, I apologize in advance. And, but for any questions that the Board may have, I'll begin with Pastor McCarrick.
It's fine.
Okay, Pastor.
Well, I'd like to...
I need to swear again first.
Oh, sorry.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give this Board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Chris McCarrick, C-H-R-I-S, M-C-C-A-R-R-I-C-K. I'd like to begin. I think I'll go to the podium. I'm more comfortable with these things.
And then, just, just Pastor, before you get into substantive testimony, can you just explain for the record, you know, what your position is, you know, what your role is with the, with the church?
Yes, I'm, I'm the senior pastor of Cornerstone Calvary Chapel, senior and founding pastor, have been in existence for 25 years, and I, I just want to thank the Board for hearing us tonight, and, and we have a group of our congregants here also, as you can see, a few extra people perhaps, and we're, we're really glad to be able to stand before you tonight. Is there any more detail you needed there, sir?
I'm good.
Okay. I just want to give a little background of who we are and what we've been involved in for many years. We began as a small home Bible study, as I said, in, actually, 1992, and then started Sunday services in 1994, and we shortly moved from our home into a local school, rented that school for a period of two years, and then went to another local school and were there for four more years. We then rented a facility in Lakewood for, I believe it was about four years there also, where we, you know, renovated and kept a small space, and, and our, our congregation just continued to grow and grow. And then, and in 2001, you might recall the old Howell movie theater, and it was in quite disarray and had been in disarray for many years. Another church had purchased the property, and we're unable to, to fulfill what they needed to do there, so we, we actually bought the property out of foreclosure, and were able to take that property and restore it and turn it into a nice use for us. It's, and we've been there since then, and, so that's 18 years ago that we've been there. And we've been involved in many things in the community during that time, during those 18 years, and even most recently, we have been very committed to Howell Day each year. We're, we run a lot of the functions there with the, we give away all kinds of free things, and, and we don't do it just to kind of, you know, to make ourselves known. We really do it to bless the community. We did an obstacle course one year that became very popular, and nobody got injured, so we were glad of that. Various games and fun things for kids. When Hurricane Sandy hit the region, I was in touch with Mayor Walsh at the time, and we talked, talked about how we could help the township and how we could represent the township to other areas, and our church, along with other churches, got involved in a sandy relief effort throughout the whole region, based somewhat out of Ocean Grove, but also went down into Tom's River, Brick, Belmar, many of the surrounding towns, and really, being a church in Howell, we were representing Howell Township in that way. There was not a lot of damage in Howell Township, as you know, or we would have been more involved with Howell Township, but there were, for example, 1,500 homes damaged and people who couldn't even cook in Silverton, Tom's River area in, in Silverton, and we set up a feeding center for them and, and fed people for almost a year, and, and subsequently have even planted another satellite church from us that's now an existing, it's its own entity now. So we represented Howell as a church in that way. We've been involved in Howell chaplaincy. That's the reason Chief Kudrick had to recuse himself. We have gotten involved in that, and we have several of our staff and some of our leaders in our church are currently police chaplains, and we go on calls at times with the police department. They call upon us when there's situations that they would rather have a chaplain involved with, where, you know, we get, we get involved in helping the people and maybe helping people deal with some situations. We've attended the Office of Emergency Management meetings and training classes here in this facility, right here. We've had, actually, the chaplaincy training program was held here in this facility, and we, we've, we also have been involved with Sergeant Hill and the, I can't remember the other man's name from the emergency management, but we've had classes with them. We met with the, with several of the leaders about the opiate crisis. So we're very involved in Howell Township. We, we believe in this town. We want to help the town. We want to do everything we can to, to be good neighbors with the people here. There's approximately 1,000 people, I'd say, who call Cornerstone Calvary Chapel their church home. Doesn't mean we have 1,000 people attend on any given week, but you probably could say that in any church. But we, we have a weekend attendance probably of about 600 people in a couple of different services, which is a strain on our current facility on Route 9, but we're able to make it work, but this is thus the reason we're, we're before you. We also have some midweek meeting. We have a midweek meeting and other meetings going on during the week. Our main midweek meeting is a, a midweek Bible... Our main midweek meeting is a midweek Bible study in which about 150 people attend on that week, that time. I'm, I'm addressing some of the issues that CMA brought up in their report also as we go through this. They asked some questions about the holidays and, you know, Christmas and Easter, what would be the, what would happen during those times. We typically add an additional service during those times to help with the crowds and, and that really just takes care of it so we don't have to overburden the, the facility. We just add an additional service time. And then, and there is an increase sometimes of services during those times, like during Easter week or Passion Week, we'll have some extra evening services, like Good Friday, of course. We were asked also about our staff and we have a staff of four pastors and three administrative people that currently work with us. And, and we were also asked about truck traffic. We, we have no unusual truck traffic, other than the ones that like to park in our parking lot on Route 9, we have a few of those, but we have no real, real traffic of any kind. Normal FedEx deliveries, UPS deliveries. Landscaping, we, you know, one of the things I think the board could be concerned about is, will we be able to take care of a site like this? We've taken care of the site on Route 9. Any of you who drive down Route 9, you'll never, you don't see an eyesore there on Route 9. It was an eyesore for probably five or six years at least from when the movie theater lost it. And we cleaned it up and we've kept it clean. There's some questions that came up about the use of our children's ministry area. And, and that, that, that would, that, you know, that is primarily, really, that's for our Sunday school on Sunday and on Wednesdays, our Bible classes. And that would be the reason we need that. Also, the, the multipurpose room, it's for church use. We don't have plans to do things like, you know, large weddings or, you know, outside rentals or any of those things. That's not even in our vision of what we want to do. We really prefer to do things for our own congregation. And it'll primarily be used for, for children and youth ministry. So with that introduction, again, I would just like to thank the board and just say that, you know, Cornerstone is committed to Howell. We've been in Howell, we will stay and be involved in the community. And this facility will only let, only allow us to do more for the township than what we've already done. So that concludes my remarks.
Does the board have any questions of pastor?
All right, then, Mr. Chairman.
Just one quick question. Would you mind commenting on the potential activities in the recreation area in the rear, to the rear of the building?
The professionals are going to comment on that. I mean, I'll just simply say it's primarily going to be for, like, you know, maybe we take the children out for a little outing outside, have a little, you know, throw a ball around.
Use of the open space as grass and-
Yeah, it's, you know, we'll put a picnic table and have our staff have lunch there, you know, it kind of, it's not going to be anything more than that. We're not looking at ball fields or any of those things.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Pastor, do you have any busing for the school?
No, we don't have a school.
Okay.
We, we, this is, this is just for a Sunday school use. I call it school, Sunday, Sunday church, it's children's church, really. So we don't have a Christian school or a nursery school or any of those things, so no, we don't have a bus.
Okay. Anyone have questions?
No questions for the pastor. I just want to say, Pastor, I've had the privilege over the past eight years to work with you and your congregation over many occasions, and you have truly been an asset to Howell Township.
Thank you.
So we're glad you're staying. We still have to do our job and make sure that everything fits, but-
Yeah. Thank you.
Would anyone in the audience like to ask questions of the pastor? Please step up to the podium.
Please state your name and give us your address.
My name is John McNulty, M-C-N-U-L-T-Y. My address is 4 and 12 Arnold Boulevard in Howell, New Jersey.
Okay, and again, this is for questions only, not, not whether you'd like or dislike the application.
No, I understand that. I just wanted to find out if there were any activities that the pastor hadn't talked about today that would increase the traffic conditions and some things. I own the property directly across from my church. I'm actually the only neighbor you have, if you look at the diagram. I own the properties that are directly across the Lakewood Allenwood Road.
Okay.
Both the corner property and the property here, this property, so.
Mr. McNulty, you just need to get close to the mic so we can pick you up.
Mr. Newman, are you going to put on a traffic expert?
We did not provide a traffic report. Well, we provided a report, but it's my knowledge that was approved.
Is your engineer that you brought tonight able to speak to traffic?
Yeah, he's a professional licensed engineer and has testified before many-
So, Mr. McNulty, once the engineer testifies, he's probably the more appropriate witness to-
Yeah, there, I, I just want to say a few things. I may be out of sequence here. I heard what you said. I have a little bit of a hearing disability, so hearing everything. I just want to introduce myself and say that I'm there, I've been in the township for 40 years, and I am the only neighbor, and I have some questions about what is going on. I received a certified letter-
Right.
-six days ago, and I had no time for real preparation, so I'll sit down now, but I just want to, if possible, I can get my-
Well, aside from the traffic, do you have any other questions?
It would be just associated with this, there's a two-lane street, the Street Arnold Boulevard, in one lane in each direction, and the same for Lakewood Allenwood Road. And if there's services and stuff where there are people coming, a lot of people coming to your facility, your church, I was concerned about what will happen. I've had a lot of problems with the church, not the churches that are there, except for snow removal. They come across and damage the property quite a bit over the period of years. But with just the, the amount of traffic that's on that, our area there, Lakewood Allenwood Road and the roads from Lakewood in through Howell Township is creating a problem on a regular basis. And I'm trying to figure out what may be the impact from your-
Mr. Newman, your engineer will cover that?
Yeah, well, yes, sir. That's a-
So, Mr. McNulty, they're going to provide testimony from their engineer. Having heard that question, I think he'll now affirmatively testify to that, and you'll also have an opportunity to ask him questions once he's done.
Okay, and, and the other things they'll be asking about, I don't want to, not to go to any notes because it'd be too extensive, but the other things are about landscaping, lights in the parking lot.
That'll be the engineer also.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I can sit down now?
Yeah, but you had another question.
Well, hold, no, no, ma'am, you have to-
Introduce.
-come up to the mic, state who you are and what your address is.
My name is Jody Pallella, and I'm, the address is 4 and 12-
Hold on, how do you spell your last name?
P-A-L-E-L-L-A.
Okay, and your address?
4 and 12 Arnold Boulevard.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
And I was just wondering how many services there would be during the course of the week.
Yeah. So our normal services are on Sunday morning, two services, 9 and 11, and we wouldn't have any plan of changing that. And then we have a Wednesday evening service, as I mentioned, and, and so that's our other, that's our main services during the week. We do have ancillary other services, but most of them are smally attended, so it might be, you know, you might have 10 cars or something like that, it's not going to be very much. So really, those are the only two time periods that are, are really impacted, main time periods during the week, so.
And you have a simple question if you can answer. The driveways that exist now, they're going to be the only driveways in and out for ingress and egress?
Yes, actually, our proposal shows that, they'll address that, but our proposal shows how the, how the site plan's going to be laid out, so.
All the time to, I'll have a time to ask some more questions later in the meeting, right?
Yes, you will.
I can sit down now.
Yeah, okay.
Nice to meet you, neighbors.
Pastor, just before we move on, how late into the evening normally does the church have either services, programs, classes, or whatever is involved in the ministry?
Yeah, normal services are over, everyone's out of the building by 9, 9:30 at night.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to ask a question of the pastor? Okay, seeing none, I'll close that portion. And, Mr. Newman, you can go to your next witness.
Yes, sir. I'd like to call Mr. Stephen Musto, the professional engineer with Inside Engineering. With the board's permission, I'll have him do a broad-brushed overview of the application. And in order not to be repetitive, I'll probably then segue into the CME report, which is the major report, and try to take the board through that with him, if that would be-
That's our normal procedure.
Is it?
Yes.
Because I wasn't sure, I haven't been before this board, since I was your board attorney about 20 years ago, 25 years ago, a long time ago. So I just want to be sure if that would be okay with you.
And also, having heard Mr. McNulty's questions-
Yes.
-if he could specifically address those issues as well.
Okay.
First thing we'd like to do is get your-
If you could sit there and just so long as your bottom off the mic.
Yeah, I just need to swear.
Or use the handheld mic.
Yeah, you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Stephen Musto, S-T-E-P-A-G-N-M-U-S-T-O.
It's not.
How bad are you acting?
how many boards you've appeared before and whether you've been accepted as an expert before other boards or the courts or anywhere in the state of New Jersey.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license number is 54884. I have not appeared before this board before or any other board. This is my first testimony. I'm actually very excited for this day. I have a bachelor's of science in civil and environmental engineering from Virginia Tech, and I've been practicing in the state of New Jersey for approximately five years.
Now, do you work with Pat Ward?
Yes, I work with Pat Ward, who unfortunately couldn't be here for a family emergency.
And, but you're personally familiar with the contents of the site plan application and you're knowledgeable for purposes of testifying this evening?
Yes, I feel confident in testifying for this application.
So if you would-
Mr. Newman?
Oh, yes, sir.
You don't have any actions pending in front of the professional engineer board, or have you had any actions filed against you?
No.
Okay. We'll accept him as an expert in civil engineering.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Musto, with, with my request that you be thorough, but not with, not a lot of words, do you want to run the board through the conceptual aspects of the site plan and then we can segue to the CME report?
Yes. So the property is located on the corner of Allenwood Lakewood Road and Oak Glen Road. It is approximately 12.8 acres and will be approximately 12.2 acres after a dedication for widening the roadway to the township of Howell. It's in the agricultural rural estate zone, the ARE2 zone, and is a conditional use. House of worship is a conditional use, and we meet all of the checklist requirements. The site is unique in that it has, it's encumbered by a category one waterway, which is called Dix Brook or known as Haystack Brook, and associated wetlands, and a 50-foot wide sanitary easement traversing the property.
Mr. Musto, can I just introduce you? We, we prepared exhibit A-14, which is reduced size site plan and that. You're, I can see you're looking at the enlarged copy.
Can you talk through the mic? We can't hear you.
I can see you're looking at the enlarged copy, and I'm pretty confident the board cannot see that. Can you identify, confirm that in fact that picture is in the reduced site plan exhibit A-14 that we talked about? And/or do you want to turn that exhibit more toward the board so they can see it better?
We would ask that he both turn it and move it forward almost up to the, to the podium. Yeah.
Bring it up higher.
Actually, if you can just bring it right in front of it. Yeah, that's good, right there.
All right, so I'll repeat. The site is encumbered by a category one waterway with an associated repairing buffer and associated wetlands and a 50-foot wide sanitary easement. And I'm pointing to exhibit A-12. So the sanitary easement runs along Oak Glen Road diagonally through the, the middle of the northern property line and onto adjacent properties and out towards Lakewood Allenwood The proposed project stays out of the, the regulated buffers and the repairing zone associated with the stream and the wetlands. The applicant is seeking to, to demolish the existing church and single-family home and to replace it with this nicer 17,400-square-foot church with approximately 704 seats and approximately 34 feet tall, and as well as a two-story parsonage, which is approximately 2,400 square feet with four bedrooms and is approximately 25 feet tall. Representative of a single-family home. The existing utilities for the existing church are currently serviced by well water and a septic system, and the proposed project intends to do the same. We propose a well behind the, the church, as I'm pointing to, almost in the exact middle of the site, and a septic system along the roadway, along Oak Glen roadway. These are subject to the county health department and, yeah. Gas and electric, we propose to connect within Oak Glen Road. We do not know at this time if a pad is needed, but a pad-mounted transformer, but if needed, it will be properly screened and placed in location. And regarding utilities, there is, due to the road widening, there's a, a utility pole that we will have to relocate to the corner of Oak Glen Road and Lakewood Allenwood Road. Regarding the stormwater, the existing site has no stormwater management. And just for information, the site generally slopes towards the stream going from a southerly to northerly direction with a portion of the existing site draining into Allenwood Lakewood Road. So part of this project, we are, we are considered a major development. We propose an infiltration basin, which will meet all of the DEP requirements regarding stormwater quality, quantity, and groundwater recharge.
Is that going to be a wet basin or a dry basin?
So it's an infiltration basin with a layer of sand to promote the, the stormwater to infiltrate into the ground.
So it's going to park within 72 hours?
Correct.
How, what's the deepest that that, how mu, how much freeboard on that?
There-
From the top of the slope to the top of the sand?
You can go back to your documents. You take time. Okay. That's why they gave us paper. We don't have to know everything off the top of our head.
So the top of the berm is at elevation 45.8, and the bottom of the basin is at elevation 43, so it's approximately 2.8 from bottom to top of berm.
Are you putting any type of protection around the basin so people don't, animals don't inadvertently wander down into that?
We do not propose any type of barrier at this time.
Would you be willing, if the board saw fit, to maybe do a split-rail fence around the basin? Split-rail fence with wire mesh behind?
Maybe we, we'll deliberate on that and probably other requests and provide an answer to each one.
Actually, as I'm looking, I, I think you, I think you actually have it proposed.
Actually, yes, we do propose a fence around the, the basin on the site side of the basin, so adjacent to the parking lot and to the church, but not along the, the berm towards the wood side. wood side.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you want to...
A look up on the board. I'm pointing to the basin. This area would have a split-rail fence, as well as this area would have a split-rail fence, but this rear portion currently is not proposed to have any barrier, but the side along the church and the side along the parking area would.
So what's your what's your opinion on that?
I think it's adequately protected from the case that someone may walk or meander through. I really don't have an issue with it being open towards the rear.
Okay. I'm sorry, proceed.
Regarding traffic and circulation, the existing parking lot is in disrepair, and it holds approximately 18 parking stalls for we intend to improve the existing two driveways along Allenwood and Lakewood Road, with the first entrance being in line with Arnold Boulevard and the second one farther down the road to the south. We eliminate one of the existing driveways, which was present on Oak Glen Road at almost at the corner intersection with Brook Road, Oak Glen Road, and Allenwood-Lakewood-Alenwood Road. As discussed, the traffic is typically whenever there's service, so Wednesdays and Sundays. We don't expect any deliveries or any trucks bigger than a delivery truck such as FedEx or UPS, but if you refer to the site plans, we show a fire truck navigating the site to allow for emergency vehicles, as well as a path for the for the fire truck to access the rear of the church in case it was on fire. As mentioned before, we propose a 23.5-foot widening of Lakewood-Alenwood Road along the entire frontage, and it aligns with the property line, the front property line adjacent. There was a concern in CME's review letter about the additional runoff going into Lakewood-Alenwood Road, and it's a slight increase of .1 CFS for all design storms, and we see this as a de minimis increase, and this is due to the additional incurvious area generated by the road widening and due to the grade of how it follows the contours of the road, and we cannot capture it, create the site to capture it on site. So we ask for relief from this slight increase to this Allenwood-Lakewood Road.
Do we have a drainage system on?
We do, and so it's collected at an inlet specifically at that intersection. However, as was indicated, there is a slight increase in flow to that inlet in the proposed condition. I would certainly ask the design engineer to just take another look at it and see if there's any way to reroute the drainage into the site, just to mitigate that so that we don't have any I understand .1 isn't a tremendous amount of runoff, but just to mitigate that.
Yeah, Ms. Newman, Mr. Herman also issued a memo today dated today indicating his concern of that as well.
I don't believe he indicated that he had a drainage concern. He had a concern about where the intersection was going to align with the inlet, and he recommended a relocation of that inlet, then it had to be extended to the north so that it actually got on the relocated curb line. So that's the inlet we're talking about, but I don't believe he's talking about the flow.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry. I was looking at item number two. I didn't realize that was Oak Glen Road. I'm sorry, different. It was the side road. Apologize. Oak Glen Road, he has a concern about adding curving and drainage.
That's correct. I mean, and while we're here, I mean, I would ask, is the applicant willing to extend curving and drainage along Oak Glen Road?
Can we can we?
Yes, you can consider that.
Can I use a football metaphor? Can we punt on that for a while?
Sure.
On that question? Can I wait till the end? Because that could...
We just received a comment to that.
Yeah.
I think it's dated.
Yeah, that's fine. Yes, that's fine. We're asking you to put it on your list that we'll circle back to it.
Yes, sir, if we could. There's a couple of those kind of items.
So then, what I'll do is I'll let your engineer continue with his testimony, and then at the end, maybe we can go through Mr. Herman's memo one by one and...
Yes, sir.
And answer those questions. That way it stays organized.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So regarding the existing parking lot, as I mentioned, it's in disrepair, approximately 18 stalls. Proposed, we propose a total of 284 parking stalls, which meets the required demand for our use and the parsonage. We propose to only construct 180 of the parking stalls at the initial construction of the church, and through talking with the pastor, he believes that this is sufficient enough for the start of the chapel before it is established. And as they see the parking lot nearing capacity and parishioners showing up consistently, they will construct the additional 104 banked parking stalls at that time. And the banked parking stalls is shown in Exhibit A-12 in this dash line with hatching associated.
Ron, what would trigger that? Because that's a little concerning.
Yeah, this actually has sort of a unique ordinance associated with it here in town that goes through the regulations for the for banked parking. It's the only it's the only area where we where the ordinance actually even speaks to banked parking.
Yeah, so if I could specifically, Section 188-107D talks about where the total number of off-street parking spaces required may not be immediately required for a particular use. The planning board may allow for a staged development plan, but requires that at least 75% of the required stalls be constructed at the time that the use is done. That's subject to certain conditions, which includes, you know, site plan delineating the area which would be used for the bank stalls. The portion of the parking area can't be paved initially or landscaped, and then the applicant shall agree in writing on the submitted plan to pave any or all of those non-paved parking areas once it's demonstrated that it's inadequate.
So how many parking stalls are at the existing Calvary?
Approximately 18.
No, no, no.
No. Oh, I'm sorry.
On Route 9?
190.
190.
And proposing here 238?
Well, not immediately.
No, 284, but your initial your initial, how many?
180, which is more than 75% of the required.
And at the old on Route 9, you have how many?
He's telling me 190, but I don't think we have 190 usable parking spaces. I think there's some areas that have just gotten where it's not it's not usable for purposes, but for all intents and purposes, we certainly have 180 there.
Yeah.
So then, does that does that then trigger a need to limit the amount of people that can enter the building? And then, does that mean it's a church?
No, the building code is separate, so it has to do with the functionality. I think what you're hearing is based upon the existing congregation and what they currently operate at. They feel that building, actually, our ordinance says 75% of what's required can be constructed at this time. They're seeking to do more than 75% of what's required, but don't feel at this time they need the 200 and...
And 84.
280.
Laura, just at the beginning of that ordinance, though, it said the planning board may?
It said, and at the planning board's discretion, yes.
Yeah, so it's not it's not as of right, but it certainly, unlike other zones in town, highlights the option where those zones do not. However, I think Mr. Nacastro's point is well taken. You know, the concept of the banked parking, we rarely see like a withdrawal of the banked parking spaces, you know, when that concept is employed in virtually any other project here or elsewhere. You've placed on the record sort of, you know, a vague notion that there'll be, you know, an ongoing review of when it's necessary, but is there a way to better quantify, you know, how that decision-making process is going to be undertaken and what exactly the trigger would be to construct the additional?
Certainly, we are open to a more, you know, concrete way of saying that. Probably wrong word to use, concrete, but, you know, we do not want our congregants to be treading through mud to get into the building. So currently, the 180 parking spaces will definitely be ample for what our needs are right now. We don't fill every parking space in our current facility, nor could we even with our size of our sanctuary. So we don't anticipate even having 180 cars now. But that said, once we began to even get close to that, we want to. We would our desire would be to, you know, pave that area because, you know, as Fred wanted to tell the joke, I'll tell it. Some lady will break her heel, and they'll come talk to the pastor. So I'm going to my construction people and saying, we need to pave this. So we're it's not a it's really it's really it's for our use. We don't need it right now, and we're not sure when in the future we'll need it because you can never predict growth in that. You don't know. But we certainly are open to ideas of something that you can say triggers that.
See, that's the challenge, Pastor, because we don't know what the trigger is. You actually, running the congregation, know better. The concern I would personally have is we know what the number is that's required.
The only way to reduce the number would be to reduce the limit of people to be able to go there. And then if that and if that increases...
No, 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 you don't. That's not that's not that's...
Oh, it's where...
You don't limit anything regarding people. People, the number of people is what would help to instigate the trigger, you know, for having greater parking, so...
What triggered we have? Number of seats?
No, no, no. This is what we're saying. There is no defined trigger, so that's what we're seeking to...
If I could step back for a second. What is triggering the requirement for 284 parking spots in our ordinance?
So the requirement for a house of worship parking demand is one space for every three seats. We have 704 seats in the chapel, which requires 235 seats. We actually exceed the required demand.
So if I could go through a logical statement here, then if the seats are the ones that are creating the parking requirement, they could not put the seats in today, get another parking spot, and then have to come back here to then go ahead and put the extra seats?
If I could, but no.
That sounds crazy.
It's not. It's that's not how these ordinances work. The seats create the parking requirement. I would say it's the butts in the seat that, you know, create the actual need for the parking. If I could ask, though, how many, and I don't know if you know or Pastor, how many congregants do you have? What's the maximum number of people that show up at your current location?
Yeah, on a given Sunday, we have around 600, but that's not in one service. So, you know, we have two services. We seat 400 in our current sanctuary, and it's never completely full, and we have some children, so, you know, you're maybe looking at 300 or so, 325 per service.
Well, I guess I'm just saying, at any given point in time, what is the greatest number of people that you have there? You're saying about 350?
Well, we've had, you know, a special event, we've had more than that, but yeah, let's say 450. Our capacity, our building's 450, so if there's anybody in the fire department here, you know we've never had more than 450 people there.
I guess maybe just to clarify, I mean, either the board agrees to allow them to do the banked parking, or they would we would force them to construct it. I think or you look at some reasonable approach. Maybe every two years, they reevaluate the congregants and the membership, but to force I mean, I would also defer to the board. Do you want to force asphalt to be installed now when there isn't a foreseeable need? So I think that that's that's the reason why the ordinance gave the flexibility to allow for 75%.
How about stabilizing the ground? How about stabilizing it with there's ways of stabilizing that ground?
Once you're doing that, you're creating the parking area. It's not it's not banked anymore. If you're if you're doing anything to that area to permit it to be used for parking, it's now a parking area.
Let's also look at it this way. To just say that, do we want to add more impervious coverage? Well, that's why we're creating these detention basins to handle that. The question is this, is there an undue is there a burden for the church to do this now?
Yes.
Because that's what it comes down to. So let's let's, you know...
Yeah, so what it comes down to is by not doing that parking area, we're saving a significant amount of money. Our contractor could address the dollar amount, but it's a large sum.
That which you know we're not supposed to take into consideration, but I want to put it out there.
But it's for the time being. It's not like that we wouldn't be able to then do it later.
Well, no, that's that's enough on that, because if we're not going to...
Yes.
I know, but if we're not supposed to consider it, then you don't talk about it. So we've had more than enough of that. But I guess just I wanted to come back to what Laura had thrown out there. Is there an objection by the church, and the board would have to, you know, agree to it as well, that every, you know, whatever the timeframe is, Laura put it out there two years to confer with the board's traffic engineer, and if the board's traffic engineer agrees...
No objection.
But right now, we're self-policing.
Yeah.
And what prevents anything going through the, you know, through, and I have no doubt that the pastor will not air these spots should you need them. I get it. But I think we need something more than just self-policing.
Well, that's not self-policing because they're coming to the board's traffic engineer every two years, so the board's traffic engineer has to concur that...
Traffic board engineer could change. It's not coming back to are they coming back to the planning board, are you saying?
No, you don't have to come back for a hearing, but they would have to come back to the board's professional.
How about putting up a barrier? That limits the ability to...
No, I'm fine with the banking, as long as we have an assurance that the one proposed 180 is sufficient. And all I'm asking is please take into consideration, because we're going on kind of scouts' honor with you, that the 180 is sufficient. I'm fortunate that I pass the Calvary Church every Sunday on my way to work, and I see how busy you get, and it's, you know, this is a unique area. This isn't Route 9 anymore. You know, when you have the cones out during congregation, you could kind of control the traffic a little bit better, I think, on Route 9 than you are going to do here. So we just need reassurance, I need reassurances that the 180, maybe you go to 200, is that flexible, that at least you know?
I say we table it for now. Come back to it.
I mean, it would make the board more comfortable for us to go a little further with it. We would have no problem with that. So if you want to say you allow us to go to 200 spots, we can reconfigure our parking lot to some degree to make that work.
Hold on one second. Let me just ask, Mr. Seaman, opinion?
Yeah, I you almost have to defer to them. I mean, they're the experts in how much, you know, they really need.
The question is on the table. Instead of the 180, do we have them initially put to 200 and then have it subject, as Mr. Cachero said, every two years, they come back to a professional, board professional?
Yeah, I think that makes more sense.
Mr. Durner?
You know, I was wondering...
What's the average growth been in your congregation, say, over the last two years? Have you you have some kind of estimate?
Yeah, our growth, it's very much in spurts, so it's hard to regulate it, you know, to really put that out. It's, you know, we've grown when we first moved into our current building, we grew significantly.
Right.
And then we grew, you know, incrementally in the first 10 years.
Right.
In the last five to eight years, we have not grown numerically really that significantly.
Okay.
So there seems to be a leveling off, and it tends to have to do with the facility, to be honest.
Right.
It's like your facility becomes your restraint.
Right.
And so, once we have the new facility, we will, we're anticipating, we will grow, no doubt.
I was just trying to figure like a numerical value that we could do, and that could kind of be a trigger if you're going to say you're going to have 10% growth in one year anticipated or 15% and use that particular number to determine the amount of parking space.
That still goes to Mr. Nacastro's point, though, of, you know, self-regulation versus, you know, a review and confirmation from the board's professional.
Can I we're having some thoughts up here. Our ordinance, if I'm hearing you guys correctly, says that 75% of the spaces is the first threshold. Is that correct?
75% of the required parking, yes.
And we have 200, I'm sorry, I'm hung up on how many are by code what's required?
234, I believe.
234. So what's 75% of 234?
175.5.
Okay, so there's your answer. So there's your answer.
I thought we had 280.
That's, that's what we're... That's what we propose, but the actual requirement is...
Oh, requirement is 234.
Yeah.
So then you've met the 75% threshold at the lower number?
Yeah.
Yes.
So precedent would not be set, we would be at the parameters that are already in place?
Well, the precedent is never going to be set because the way the ordinance is written, it's an individual assessment, you know, for each application.
I, I, yeah. No, I understand, I'm sorry, it's a bantry word. I would just like to make decisions based on, along the same lines for the different, for different religions. I wouldn't want...
Well, let me tell you something. You are absolute, I want to be abundantly clear. Every religious denomination that comes in here for any house of worship is treated absolutely the same.
Just saying that, if the threshold, I'm sorry, if 75% is the lesser number, then I think we have met what we were trying to do without saying 200, 25, whatever. So I think we might be overthinking this one. Am I incorrect in those numbers?
No, you're correct. Just to clarify, based upon rounding, I think it's actually 235, which takes you to 176.
Okay, okay, okay. All right.
I don't like setting precedences. I'm sorry, I'm just going to say that I'm...
Well, don't use that word because I'm, that was a misnomer on my part, and I apologize. I was just trying to find a, a common ground for me to rationalize this.
Is there any way that you can just put in the required 234 so we can move on to this?
I, I, I think that, that's an undue burden on him, Mr. Tannenhouse. And I, I agree with the pastor. He's represented right now that he has maybe about 325 people maximum at a service. If you assume it's a family and it's two people in a vehicle, all right, that comes out to be 160...
Parking.
162, right? If he's going to provide 100 and...
80.
180 spaces.
Yeah, and that doesn't...
I think that's reasonable.
That doesn't account for any children either.
Well, children don't drive, yeah.
So, yeah, so, no, my point is that number...
Not that I know of.
That number would be even lower then.
Right. Right. I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with the, with the 175.
No, 180.
180, I'm sorry. And then if you don't object, I, I do like Mr. Cuchero's, that we have a programmed revisit so that we don't get a situation.
I think the pastor agreed to it. Yeah, they've already agreed to it.
Right. Okay, so, everybody okay?
Is that going to be put in the D?
That's going to be part of the resolution.
Well, not only is it part of the resolution, but as part of the ordinance, they're required to make a written statement which confirms the phasing plan. I mean, if, if you'd like, you know, if, if the concern is that, you know, into the future, you know, you may have different people who are unaware of, of the approval, you know, we could have them record the resolution, you know, if, if you want.
I would be comfortable if the resolution got recorded.
I have no objection to that. Nacastro, okay. Move on.
Okay, moving on.
Yep.
Regarding refuse, it, under existing conditions, private hauler receives and hauls out the trash, and we propose the same, and we propose a evergreen screened trash enclosure. Regarding lighting, under existing conditions, there's, there's one pole mounted light, and we propose a really nicely lit illuminated site. There was a comment that we exceed the, the average maximum demand of foot candles, but we request a waiver for this because we believe that providing, the levels that we provide provide a safe and adequate site for church members to go, to walk across the parking lot for those Wednesday masses, or services.
So could you expand upon that? What's, what's the average maintained foot candles that you're proposing?
Mr. Chairman, there's an extensive, CME has an extensive comment on the lighting, and...
You want to cover it then?
Yes, sir, if I would. I'll sort of intercept Mr. Musto here and say, "Let's just stay with the concept," and then we'll, we'll hit all these issues, the CME comments. Let's wait till we get to the actual CME letter.
So we propose 11 pole lights within the parking lot and two building mounted lights. Regarding landscaping, there is minimal to no site landscaping on the existing site except for the existing trees. And we propose a nicely landscaped site along the street and within the parking lot and around the church itself. We propose street trees along Allenwood and Lakewood Road as lo, as well as Oak Glen Road. And those trees are planted on a three-foot tall berm to screen any of the onsite lighting from parked cars.
Sherry, you want to comment on that?
We're going to cover that.
I met onsite yesterday, Walter. We had walked the site. I guess it would be up to the, to the board's discretion, some of the issues are, it looks, you know, there is a scattering of existing trees out there, you know, in the front area of the site. So of course, with berming, you couldn't save any of those trees. Some of them are decent, some of them are not so much. So, you know, right now, they're showing a, a berm without any landscaping. So the berm would really take the place of that three-foot high hedge that would block headlight glare. Of course, if you decided to save some of the trees, if it was possible, you know, we wouldn't have that, that berm. So that would be something that would be up to the board if they want to see the hedge or not.
Mr. Newman, given Mr. McNulty lives directly across from the facility, I, I like the applicant to consider doing something.
And along, along that line, Mr. Nash, we met, we were with Ms. Sparrow yesterday, and she has extensive comments in the CME report, and myself, as well as the team met this morning. And what I have here on my notes is that we agreed to work with CME and the landscape consultant to address all of her comments on page nine of her report, which are considerable, so I think, and also on page 10. So we can cover that again at the time we go through that, but I think landscaping will be one of the easier resolutions of the application.
Yeah, my technical comments though, don't address that part of it. We would have to decide, you know, if the board would like to see that three-foot hedge and save whatever trees we could, or have the berm. It's possible to break the berm for a couple trees that might be worth keeping, but the board would have to decide if they're going to grant that or not.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, perhaps you may want to wait, and then maybe we let the public see what, considering we have one resident directly across the street, maybe we should defer to when we open it for comment. He may have it, he may prefer the berm, he may prefer a hedgerow with the existing vegetation. So perhaps we may want to hold that issue until we hear from the public.
I, I agree with you on that.
Okay. So continuing, we...
Are you done with lighting yet, or are we coming back to that?
We're coming back to lighting.
So regarding signage for the property, there's an existing sign along Allenwood-Lakewood Road, and it's, it's approximately three to four feet from the proposed right-of-way, but we propose to a, a new ground sign with landscaping around it, 10 feet off of the proposed right-of-way along Allenwood-Lakewood Road. And even, no detail has been designed at this time, but we intend to comply with all signage ordinances and requirements. That's, that's it for me. Checklist and for the waivers and...
Right, right. We'll cover that in the CME review letter. So that's as an overview of the application through our project engineer, Mr. Chairman. So I'll, I'll pause on that and leave it up to the chairman before I can ask a question.
All right, at this, at this point, either, I, I would like for him to run through the CME letter, all right? And then we can ask the questions as we go through there.
Okay, so in that regard, Mr. Chairman, I would direct the members of the board to the CME letter dated November 21st, and respectfully would say that I think our discussion can begin on page four. I'll give everybody a minute to, to go through that, but I think everything else has been either identified or is, is really not an issue. So I would start with page four under the checklists and the relief requests.
Mm-hmm. Start with 1A.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So comment 1A, Mr. Musto, do you want to address that, please?
Yes. So what the comment is referring to is this residential slash farmland buffer along the northern property line closer to the Allenwood-Lakewood Road. I'm pointing, it's at the northeast corner of the property. I'm pointing to exhibit A12. And as we show it tonight, there is a shed encroaching within this buffer, but from your comments, we agreed to move the shed outside of that buffer area, and that would satisfy that, that 1A comment. In that 1A comment, they, they show that they allow a fence along the rear property line. So we, we do propose a fence along this, the rear northern property line, and that fence is to act for safety and to provide a yard for the pastor's family who will be using that house and that backyard.
So if I recall correctly, that's a horse farm on the adjacent property?
Yes.
Yeah. We don't have anyone from the public, the homeowner isn't here for that? We, we've had, let me ask you, what type of fence are you proposing?
We propose a, a four-foot high stockade, or split rail fence.
Or stockade.
Or stockade.
Maybe like a final fence of some sort for the yard.
I, I, I don't want to go out of seat counts, but we've, we've had this issues, ma'am, if you could, we've had this issues with other developments next to horse farms, and there's always a concern about children putting their hands through a fence and the horse biting them.
Let me follow protocol. My name is Janet Coakley. I live at 3039 Lakewood-Alenwood Road. It is not Allenwood-Lakewood Road.
Ms. Coakley, can you just...
I've lived over 30 years.
Can you just spell your last name?
C-O-A-K-L-E-Y. I have a horse farm. I have had issues already with the church that is there, so I am very concerned. I have multiple concerns, and I don't want to go out of order.
No, no, I'm trying...
Just want to point out that...
We're, we're trying to extract, all right, what we can do to address your issues.
I've had children come to my fences and throw stones.
Mr. Chair, since it's not questions, let me just swear you in, Ms. Coakley. You swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Go help me God. I've had children come to the fence, my fence, on my property and throw rocks at my horses. I have had a child put nails in a board and attempt to hit my horses. I have had...
We, we understand, and, and what I'm asking you...
I'm just saying, I, I need...
What type of fence, or what type of treatment?
There needs to be more than a fence. There needs to be a buffer. You also need to understand the topography from that property to my property. May I make comments to be addressed by the engineer that I made notes of?
You're sworn in.
So that, they're like questions to the engineer. So the first is the farm buffer. It has to be extremely adequate. My property, okay, I want to do this as questions. I'd like to know more about the stormwater control.
I'm, I'm going to get to that in a minute. I, I want to just focus on the fence issue right now, all right? We'll, we'll, we'll deal with the other questions. I'm just trying to, because our professionals have brought this up as an issue.
Right, and I'm trying, but what I'm trying to say is the fence is not just a security issue, it's a lighting issue. My property is much lower than their property. All their lights are going to be right in my second story windows. All these cars are going to be right in my second story windows. So there's multiple issues here regarding that buffer.
Are you what, 202?
Yes.
Okay, so this far right here.
And you're directly in my front yard.
All right, so basically, you're looking for, I'm understanding that you're proposing a four-foot high or a six-foot high?
A four-foot high.
A four-foot high stockade, board-on-board, what type of fence?
Yeah, stockade.
Stockade fence. And you're saying you want something more than that?
I think there should be a significant berm to keep water from running off of their property onto mine, as well as fencing.
So as the site currently exists, our site in that, in this area that she is talking about where the proposed fence and backyard is going to be, it's approximately 15 feet higher than this wood, the edge of this wood line. And to address the next comment, they, they talk about the, the requirements for within this farmland buffer, and they say, "Please provide a 10-foot high fence," or you need to provide two of the following. Landscaped fencing of walls at least 10 feet high and landscape berm at least 6 feet high. We believe that we meet this intent by this 15-foot grade differential. There's an existing...
Can I just ask, you're higher than her property?
Correct.
Significantly.
Well, how, then how is, how is that screening her?
Right.
Also, I just have a question.
Directly in my house.
There, there are no lights directed towards her property, and according to the, the lighting plan, the foot handles are at zero at the property line.
Okay, I understand. I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about you're 15-foot higher on your side of the property line than her side of the property line, not the other way around, all right? So how are you screening when she's going to look out, she's going to see your development?
So Mr. Musto, describe the, describe the, the buffer area.
Just before you do that, Counsel, Mr. Musto, you said something that I just want to hone in on for a moment, make sure I understand. When you said you meet the intent of the ordinance, you do not meet the actual ordinance requirements?
Correct. You do not meet the actual...
And Laura, is that variance or waiver?
It's a variance.
All right, so saying you meet the intent is not like positive and negative criteria. You're going to have to put something on the record as to how, you know, you're advancing the goals of planning and what, if there's any substantial detriment. And, and I think what you're hearing is a lot of the negative criteria arguments.
Understood. So...
Well, in order to help you get momentum, momentum on this issue, we're talking about a protective fence for small children behind the parsonage owner, correct?
Correct.
If I understand our neighbor's concern, she, she does not want headlights from cars coming into her second floor, nor does she want children to be able to enter onto her property to disturb her horses. Now, the way I look at yours, at the site plan and the topography, as well as the vegetation, I'm having a hard time understanding how those concerns can exist. So would you point to the location on the site plan and show the board the existing tree lines, screen areas, show the board where the trees are on our neighbor's property, and then would you please show, and emphasize to the board, this ocean towny utility easement, and kind of quantified by the distances that exist between our neighbor's home, her barn, the tree lines, the 15-feet upgrade to the, to the property, and how that all ties in with the request for the fence behind the parsonage?
Will do. Let me just grab my scale. So, miss, is, is this your house right here?
This is the house. My driveway. Three of the trees appear to be formed against the arch. Same board.
So this aerial is taken at winter time, as is evident by the lack of leaves on these trees. This is a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees, which provides...
Majority is evergreen.
And again, this is, this parsonage is residential in character. I, I understand that this application...
Mr. Musto, if I could, I'm going to... Mr. Musto, if I could, I'm going to stop you. We have a 50-foot required right-to-farm buffer in the township, and it is required to be planted. So just to be very clear, so the board understands, are you proposing plantings within the area between your property and this farm?
No, we do not propose.
Okay, so that's, I think, is the issue. The chairman had called the resident up to specifically talk about the fence. We have specific standards in our ordinance. It talks about berming, it talks about fencing, none of which are proposed in your buffer, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, you know, on this issue, that buffer is not sufficient, and it requires a variance. So the board may need to deliberate. We've heard the concerns of the resident, as well as the farm owner, that, you know, she's looking for compliance with the farmland buffer.
Exactly.
Okay. Counselor?
Yes, sir.
It's a quarter to nine. I like to, we've gone here for an hour and 45 minutes. We're going to take a 10-minute break.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Thank you. We're going to take a 10-minute break. All right, I'm going to reconvene the Howell Township Planning Board. Eileen, can we do a roll call, please?
Mr. Dorado?
Here.
Chief Kudrick was recused, so he's not here. Mr. Nacastro? Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes, here.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Here.
Chairman Nash?
Here.
Yes, you have a forum.
Okay, so we didn't lose anybody?
No.
Nobody went home.
All right, so, Mr. Newman?
Yes, sir.
We've discussed, Mr. Nacastro has to leave because of a commitment. And what I would like to do is, since you want to preserve Mr. Nacastro's vote, we like to put on some issues that the board has, some concerns, so that we are going to bring you back, all right? So that you have time to address these. And after we do that, then we'll determine when we can bring you back. And we'll adjourn for the evening.
Okay.
Okay? So with that, what was yours?
Mr. Newman, thank you for first accommodating the board. We figured we wouldn't get through this tonight. But traffic, we discussed briefly some traffic issues. I know the latest traffic report submitted to the board and us, to the professionals, is a little outdated. It has come to your attention as well that we do have some potential other development coming in this area that may have a significant impact on Lakewood-Alenwood and Oakland. So I'm going to request that the traffic study be updated. I believe you're going to bring a traffic expert to discuss some of those issues and see how we could address the traffic in that area with this added juice. Pretty much that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Tannenhaus?
Sure. Since we're going to be coming back, I'd like the engineer to take a look at the lighting. And I'd like you to provide some testimony when you come back on your proposed timeframes of when the lights would be coming on and off and whether those timeframes would be beyond normal dusk hours. And if so, what would be the latest those lights would be on? For, because it is a rural area. I'm a little concerned about what looks like to be very high max-to-min ratios. I would like you to bring some IES documentation and try to provide us what the IES recommends for max-to-min ratios. And even some of your peak foot candle levels as well underneath some of the lights. I'm a little concerned with some of the seven and eight-foot candle ratings that I'm seeing. So if you could provide some testimony and bring some documentation next time you come.
We're not asking you to address it now.
Yeah, not now. Just make sure you're prepared for the next time.
Will do.
Thank you.
Mr. Tannenhaus, any concerns about glare?
I'm not necessarily too, too concerned about glare. In light of knowing that the property to the plan north is significantly lower, it's probably not a bad idea to do a glare study. You may also want to consider houseside shields on the Lakewood-Alenwood Road so we're not disturbing the other residents that's on the other side. Some things that you may want to consider in your testimony when you come back. And is, Ms. Newman?
Yes, sir.
What is, what is our ordinance? Can you remind me what our ordinance says at the maximum height of a luminaire? I can't recall. Yeah, they're proposing 25 feet. Is that, is that at our max?
That is the max.
Now, is it 25 feet a pole or 25 feet to the top of the fixture?
25-foot pole height.
Okay, thank you.
Seaman, you have any concerns that you would like to come back at?
Not at the moment.
Mr. Dora?
No, not at the moment.
Okay, and counselor, as I suggested, I would like to see a resolution of this issue, if we could, between the homeowner of the horse farm. I apologize, I forgot your name.
Mrs. Coakley.
Mrs. Coakley. Maybe a meeting between, excuse me, Mrs. Coakley, the engineer, and our certified tree expert to come up with an acceptable buffer. And that has to be acceptable to all parties. It's not going to be unilateral that one party gets what they want.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, if I could also add, if we could add Mr. Herman's memorandum that he issued today?
We have to go through the engineer's letters, the plant, the engineer review letter, the planning review letter, and Mr. Herman's memo.
And also Shade Tree had a comment. I didn't hear any testimony about Shade Tree's comments as well.
Yeah, we hadn't gotten to that yet. That would have been, we would have addressed that as.
I apologize for my ignorance on this. Have you gone to the environmental commission?
Everything's been submitted to the. Did we actually appear before them? I can't answer that. I don't believe we have.
I'm not sure we had any comments.
Environmental Commission issued a letter saying that all their comments were addressed.
Oh, okay, fine.
No, Mr. Hazer is not.
Yeah, right, that's, that was. All right, so I guess that's a laundry list of things that we're asking for you to come back at.
Okay.
All right? So at this point, when can we bring them back?
So before we do that, Mr. Newman, you know, what kind of time do you think your side is going to need to sort of put all of that together, you know, for the board?
Two weeks, which means three weeks.
Okay.
Because it always does. Doesn't mean I don't mean.
All right, Eileen, what do we have?
Two weeks means two weeks.
I think March 21st is our next avail. You know, March 7th is SL Homes.
We have, March 7th, we have a hearing with a lot of interested parties.
Right.
So that, that's going to be a full night. And that has to do with litigation that's coming back. So we, it has a, you know, that gets first billing that night. We do have the second meeting in March.
March 21st, there is something that was carried to that night, but there's a good chance that they may carry again.
But I think we can put this on first.
What's carried, what do we carry?
Gil.
That was Gil Petroleum. They're still working on some issues. But, you know, that's not going to finish that night either. So I think this application could go on first if Gil, in fact, is moving that night.
Okay.
So the 21st, that's good, Mr. Chairman. We'll take that night. We'll waive the time limits, grant the extension till, how far beyond that date are you, is your practice?
31st.
31st of March, we'll grant the extension.
You're actually good till April 21st.
Like I said, we'll take it until 21st.
All right, so the application of Cornerstone Cavalry Chapel, SP-1051, be carried to the board's March 21st, 2019 meeting. No further notice to property owners. So everybody that's here tonight that received a letter in the mail regarding this hearing, you're not going to get another letter. This is your notice that the next meeting is going to be March 21st, 2019, beginning 7 o'clock here in the main meeting room. If you want to take a look at any of the plans, reports, or any other documents, they're on file with Eileen in the Planning and Zoning Office. You can come during normal business hours, and you're free to take a look.
Does that date change?
If that, that date can't change until March 21st. So no matter what, there, if it changes, then we would make another announcement on March 21st. But at this moment, this is the only notice you're going to get. This is going to be March 21st.
And we'll put them on ahead of Gil Petroleum?
Yeah, it'll be first on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The members will see you on the 21st.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
All right. So does the audience all understand that we're going to take no more hearing, no more testimony tonight, no more discussion on this application, and you to come back on March 21st?
And you'll all have an opportunity to ask questions to the witnesses and make whatever comments you'd like at that time. Yes, yes.
Yeah, we're not done with this engineer. Not by a long shot.
Yeah, he hasn't finished his testimony even, so.
Okay, do we need to go into executive?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
All right, Eileen, do you want to read the statement?
Yes.
Executive Session Resolution Whereas Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 13 of the New Jersey Revised Statutes Requires That the Public Shall Not Be Excluded From Any Meeting of a Public Body Unless a Resolution Authorizing Such Exclusion Is Adopted at a Public Meeting And Whereas the Planning Board of the Township of Howell Has Determined That Such a Closed Meeting Is Required to Discuss Certain Matters Which Are Exempted from Consideration With the Public in Attendance Under New Jersey Revised Statutes 10:4-12 Namely Litigation, Villages Association Versus Howell Township Planning Board, SL Homes, and Savino-Savo. Now Therefore Be it Resolved By the Planning Board Of the Township of Howell That the Public Shall Be Excluded From the Next Portion of This Meeting And That the Planning Board Will Reconvene In Public Session Thereafter. Be it Further Resolved That Minutes Will Be Kept Of the Meeting in Closed Session And The Time And Circumstances Under Which The Discussion Conducted in Closed Session Can Be Disclosed To the Public Cannot Be Determined At This Time.
Can we have a motion to go into commerce?
Can I have a motion to go to executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second.
That was Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we are into executive session now.
The Planning Board will now reconvene.
Hold them all, please.
Mr. Dorado?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro, I believe, left. Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Present.
You have a forum.
Thank you. Mr. Coachella?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the subject of the executive session was litigation captioned as the Villages Homeowners Association via the Howell Township Planning Board. And it concerned an appeal of the board's approval of the SL Homes application, which was a retail/commercial project on Route 9. The parties have agreed to a settlement that we discussed. The settlement would essentially remand the matter back to the board for a rehearing. There's no judicial finding of anything. It's just, there'll be a rehearing. That rehearing will be noticed, so it'll be in the newspaper. And it will go out to the 200-foot radius list. But there's no, nothing that happened in the initial hearing is binding on the new hearing. It, as if the initial hearing didn't take place at all. I'm recommending that the board accept that settlement. SL Homes and the Villages Homeowners Association have already signed the settlement agreement. I'd ask that the board tonight make a motion, which is seconded, to also agree to the settlement. And that will authorize me to also sign the settlement agreement. And we can file it with the court, which will terminate the litigation.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I will make a motion that, in keeping with what the attorney has suggested, the other two entities have come in that agreement. And I think that we should also allow the attorney to fulfill and sign the agreement as well.
I'll second.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Is there any other business?
No, this is not a public hearing.
Is there any other business that?
Well, Green Team had a, Green Team had a very successful meeting last week. We had a bunch of new members show up. Everybody was enthusiastic. We also had a ton of guests. The mayor showed up. Deputy Mayor is representing, as she always does, representing the council on the Green Team. And we got a lot of initiatives started, and I look forward to 2019. And nothing to report on the master plan.
Yes, I was going to ask that, you may.
At this point in time, it is a work in progress to organize and to begin the master plan subcommittee.
Do you think that we may get funding this year?
Yes, I think we may.
Okay.
Okay, fantastic.
So we have another meeting, so we don't have to cancel the master plan?
Yet.
Yet, this most master plan, okay? But I guess the intent is to cancel it.
I'll wait till the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll wait till the next meeting, right.
No problem.
Okay. So seeing that, can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Good night. Meeting adjourned.